Washington, they had nature could they net or the teacher DJ DJ Aya Nakidinda Anish Ado Oheh, then he did need all that, eh, it's a The cost and sky again, I have to eat Zatah He is here, he is not, do Be kidrenday Baho, not a it's at the Do that, do, 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 Nchashni The Washington, the Nasha, who he can, he didn't know Uh, Kona ndak Then he can not John ago, that all Lala, then he is not Nchashen, could he That's the Niki, he not Ani, do ah, what, could the Washington Yeah, he went to do, they went to, I just don't have to Oh, Tana Aya Laaj, Ken Lekweisa, Aja Aja, not Ani, in the Niki President Joe Biden, Aya, Nchayaat eh, Nabedini, do hehe Nacha bedini, so no, he Nash, Niki, Fefelia Nez, oh, ah, Kona Chayalhtyo, uh, Nakidin is Lee, Di Kona, so, 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 eh Uh, President Biden, which is Kaiila And he, uh, he can, he didn't know Uh, the bed, the house, and Niki, uh Missing persons, they, Niki, Joe eh, what, eh, yeah He, not Ani, in the Niki, President Biden Not so, so, which is Kaiila, he eh, he Koon Uh, Washington, just has Aja, eh, ya, uh Kari Shkheri Danlen, Niki It's not a, it's not, it's not, Washington, just not Nishigi, ah, what, eh, yeah, he can, he didn't know Uh, Koon, he's a, that you, then, Niki Eh, she eh, ya, oh, he is, but, oh, so, no, that Ah, do, not so, so, which is Khanai, it's not, Tana Eh, Yadi Asha I don't know, one trillion dollars, 1.2 trillion dollars The neck, it's a, he, ah, it's a, so Million, eh, the meal, so Ah, do, need a billion, not, ah, it's a, it's a, na baal, yeah, eh The bill, so, yeah Trillion, eh, she, billion, Niki, by la, the, in it, oh, eh, ah So, she, that he in how, so, go Beso, eh, which, could Aliyah, di, it's he, you know, she, ah She, um, da, do, nil, do, ah, do, best, it's she Uh, since, it's, 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 it's So, eh, Nasco, da, do, nil, do, never, he, ah, Pocaw, he can, he didn't know, do The electricity, be, the halon, Niki, Tchudo, Nasco, do, nil, had no, what, ah Bela, da, asli, so, eh, do, he, not, do, ah, do Uh, not Ani, then, Niki, with, as he, he, eh, he, not, eh, could, eh, eh, Nacha Nchaya deiltio, eh, deit, she, eh, no, Lini Ah, do, Dina, she eh, Dr. Jill Jim, he, eh, non, it's it, oh, let me, uh Uh, he, ah, where, she, she, too Eh, she eh, ya, do, it's is, Bahaya, yeah, just never, Department of Health, eh, Aja Laaj, Nacha, that's a, that, oh, Nchayalhtyo Ah, do, Washington, it's is, Bahaya, yeah, Aja, Navajo area, eh, Captain Brian Johnson, eh, she, do, he, eh, had, so, eh, oh, that Del Yasi, Epidemiology, you, you, do, cost and scaggy And they, cha, don't, not so, cha, da, Niki, do, eh, Aja, that, that, now, Nesh, eh, she, do Could, oh, he, eh, had, so, eh, oh, that Ah, do, yes, eh, go, that, oh, she, nah, Vice President Lizer, eh, she, could, oh So, the Zinachai, left, oh, that, eh, she, do, eh, he, eh, but, he, need, oh, that, by now, she, it, Niki So, as I, uh, begin to, uh Jump right into the, the report, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for Tuning in to our Town Hall every week, every Tuesdays at 10 a.m. I know we didn't do a prayer, but you know what, we're gonna finish with a prayer Um, well, we just wanted to jump right in, we're in Washington DC, obviously, you see The Capitol in the background, what a lovely view And today, throughout the Navajo Nation, uh, we are remembering Our World War II veteran, Stephen Ashley Senior Uh, and you probably noticed that our flags are half-staffed All over the Navajo Nation, 27,000 square miles Uh, Arizona, Utah, and New Mexico, uh Stephen, Mr. Ashley, uh, is from Hawk, Arizona, and we Send our condolences to the family, our thoughts and prayers are with you, and We, you know, we lost, uh, another World War II veteran not too long ago, um, from, um Pine Dale area, um Benny Cowboy, who is from, um Uh, down the road, from Pine Dale, uh, Mariano Lake And we also lost him, and, and we're losing Uh, a lot of our, our World War II veterans, you know, they're up there in age, and, uh, we continue to pray for them Including our Navajo Nation co-talkers, uh, those that are remaining, you're also being livestreamed From KXWR, Dunette College Radio Station It's good to, uh, know that LA Williams is still the voice Of the Navajo Nation, is currently on the radio, letting everybody know What's happening here, yesterday, uh, you, uh, through our press release, there was, uh Uh, in, an increase in cases, 62 cases Uh, we've been seeing a fluctuation in cases for these past couple of weeks of COVID-19 Uh, some go up to 100, uh, sometimes in the double digits You know, just continue to, to keep moving forward And following these protocols, you know, wear your mask, I know Once I say this, I'm gonna get a lot of comments on it, but so be it You know, yesterday, I was at the, uh, signing ceremony for the infrastructure bill with President Biden, but you know what? Everybody was vaccinated there, everybody had vaccinations, two vaccinations Even three vaccinations there, that was the only way to get into that function Uh, at the White House yesterday And so, that is what we're trying to do on the Navajo Nation now, too, as you see Larger gatherings happening, uh, we, uh, we've started to incorporate using Or showing your vaccination cards, some of the runs that we're having throughout the Navajo Nation You have to show your vaccination card, if not, you also, if you don't wanna get vaccinated, then you show your Um, COVID-19 tests, negative tests, to, in, to be a part of those Large, uh, running, uh, events on the Navajo Nation, so, you can see Uh, the virus is gonna be here, uh, probably for, for a while Because some, um, you know, we, we continue to bring, uh The virus and back into our homes, and they're not following protocol, but we're doing Everything safely, based on CDC, based on, uh, the healthcare professionals' recommendation, alright? And we just need to stay safe as we do it, and you can see, even on the Navajo Nation, when we had our Uh, Navajo Nation Council Work Session Uh, in Twin Arrows, you know, we had a large gathering at Twin Arrows But you know what, everybody that went in had to show their, uh, vaccination card, and you know what? We even tested them before they went in to the event, and so you can see that that's gonna be Probably the future of large gatherings on, uh, the Navajo Nation So, something to, uh, think about as we are encouraging everybody to get vaccinated, on Saturday I was out in, um, uh, my son, Christopher Nez, we were out there helping out with the food I'm sorry, the vaccination distribution in Pine Hill, Reima, and the, um Uh, Red Rock State Park, GIMC vaccination event, big turnout And we, we apologize, I guess I am apologizing on behalf of, you know, the, the IHS We, we just got hit hard that day, some of you were, um Uh, were, some of you were, uh, there, waiting for a couple hours, and, uh Uh, we, we, we just, just had a big turnout, um, some of you got turkeys, some of you didn't, and so some people were Uh, kind of upset, but you know, that's just, uh, what we want, is people to come out and get their vaccination So, we thank you, uh, let me turn the time over to, uh, Fefelia here She's gonna give you a little quick synopsis of, uh Uh, what we're, what we're, what she's been advocating for, uh, here at the White House Uh, in Washington DC, and then also, um, just give you a message of taking, taking care of yourself, especially With their childrens, uh, five years and over, that are open to getting vaccinated, so, Fefelia?
Oh, yeah, good, yeah, hey, um, she, yeah, Fefelia, Nez, in a, she, ah Ah, do, Taba, Hanesha, that's, um, that's, she, nah, Kri, Naidash, Nada, that's, she, ah, do, could, oh As President said, we're out here in Washington DC, yesterday and today, uh, attending meetings on behalf of the Navajo Nation And to be a little more specific on my end, it is, uh, to really get in touch with, uh, the federal agencies to let them know that On Navajo Nation, we, um, you know, that the action plan has been legislated, and also Um, you know, that we're ready to, uh, establish Uh, the advisory group that will overlook, um, that plan, and so, and then, of course, with the signing of the executive order yesterday by Um, President Biden, to bring more resources and, um Collaboration from the federal agencies to implement, um, such things as the tribal community response plans, and We're talking about the missing peoples, um, that's been a huge, uh Yeah, that, that's been a, a huge part of our conversations out here, so That is really, um, the work that I'm doing out here, and so But in terms of the COVID-19 pandemic, I still encourage every one of you to continue practicing The mask wearing, the hand washing, and just to be very careful around one another And then as we go into the Thanksgiving holidays, and then, of course, Christmas, that Uh, we continue to keep ourselves safe and each other safe, so, um Go get your vaccinations, your boosters, and then especially for For Navajo, you know, I'm proud to say that we're at 97% Navajo Nation employees, we have them vaccinated And so, thank you for, uh, just keeping, you know It's always good to view this in a public health perspective, and so Um, keeping our community safe is, uh, but most important to, to every one of us, so, I thank you for Um, doing all you can to keep your family safe, so, thank you again
Alright, thank you, First Lady, and, uh, we're gonna just say thank you overall, Navajo Nation Uh, residents, over 70%, over 70% fully vaccinated, good job, continue to Keep that number high, it only can improve, right? Uh, with their five and older now, they're available to get their vaccines, so Nchashen, she, 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 do, but, la, Abah, what, eh, the, the, cost and scaggy Not a it's at the, zip, he, nah, Nishigi, eh, can, he, eh, that, ah, do, Kati, she, Nchashen Bahalon, oh, that, she, eh, no, Lini, so, had I, no, Lini, do, oh, he, and, and, he, need, oh, that, Washington, eh, eh, deit As can, she, eh, it's a, oh, it's, and, uh, nah, neit, uh, ni, ni, neit, Ash, oh, that, she, uh, but, he, Nash, Niki, Fefelia So, she, do, could, oh, uh, Fefelia, bah, he, and, so Uh, do, ah, she, that, oh, eh, could, oh, Nchayalhtyo, do, she, that, oh, so, zone, what, ah, he, nah, Nish, eh, eh Uh, so, oh, he, ah, do, he, 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 so, God bless you, I'm gonna turn the time over To our Vice President, Myron Lizer, have a good day, everybody, from Washington DC
Alright, thank you, Mr. President, uh, appreciate your leadership, uh, appreciate you being out there in Washington, uh, what a great time to, uh, be alive during this pandemic, uh Realizing, too, that we have a lot of our citizens, shit, and, uh, all of our people, some are undergoing hardship, extreme hardship Having lost family members, and, you know, we're all in this together, so appreciate your leadership, uh, leaders do need to do hard things a lot of times And, uh, going there to, uh, be a part of such a historic, uh, event there at the White House is, uh, very important You know, uh, it's, it's just, it's great, you know, during the Nez Lizer administration, uh, it, it has Covered two separate administrations, but the Navajo Nation was right there Right there, during the previous administration, and right there again, you see during the Biden-Harris administration, so Navajo Nation's being, uh, well-served by, uh, Nez Lizer, and appreciate our President's leadership In this fight against pandemic mitigating and pushing for the vaccines, and you know, a lot of times, we're bringing up the, the The, the low end of, uh, reporting numbers and the data, and yet, in this pandemic, we've kind of, uh, had to fight The messaging, change the narrative, but also We looked at, uh, you know, how our nation was, uh, on the front end of receiving vaccination, the rollout And its implementation, having one of the highest, uh, vaccination rates in the country, if not the world, so, uh, we're all in this together Appreciate leadership as, uh, President and First Lady are out there, so, we're looking at this time right now, I usually have numbers, I don't have numbers for you But I do have is the vaccine rates by state, this was, uh, as of, uh, November 13th, so, just a few days ago, but It probably hasn't changed as far as percentage points, uh, I, I am the Vice President, I appreciate you Uh, all for viewing and peering into all of these vital updates, uh, Comanche, this, that, 12 hundred buses, team Ah, do, Comanche, that's, she, Ash, that's, she, that, it's good to be with you this morning on this, uh, Town Hall update here Again, uh, full, those fully vaccinated in Arizona, 53.7% This in a population of over 7.05 million, uh, such a large number, but 53% of state Arizona is fully vaccinated New Mexico, out of a population of 2.09 million people, we have 62.8% that are fully vaccinated As you know, those that are fully vaccinated, if they do contract the virus, that, uh, symptoms and the, probably the, uh, need to be Hospitalized is, uh, far less, so, uh, there, these are just what the data's showing In Utah, we have 54.5% that are fully vaccinated in a state population of 3.1 million people And lastly, Colorado, 62.3% in a population of 5.6 million inhabitants in that beautiful state Colorful Colorado, as they call it, as you know, in Navajo Nation, we do have land there, two ranches there, uh, up there, the buffalo ranch and a cattle ranch, so We do say we have, uh, uh, footprint in the great state of Colorado And so, um, some notables here in my, uh, delivering of these vaccination rates, as you know, our people, uh, we have a lot of Navajo people In, uh, these varying states, California, out of a population of almost 40 million people, we have 62.1% Of our citizens there in California have been fully vaccinated, uh, Texas, 28.2 million people, we have 53.9% that have been fully vaccinated, uh, Florida, 20, uh, million people there, we have 63.4% that are fully vaccinated And New York, 67.5% full vaccination with a population of almost 20 million people, and lastly Uh, one more state of notable, notable, uh, is, uh, Nevada 53.7% out of a population of almost 3 million, 2.9 million people there, that are fully vaccinated, so There you go, again, we are, uh, advocating for, uh, an escalated sense of, uh, of, uh, being safe out there during this pandemic Extra safety is, uh, what we're promoting, especially as we lead up to the holidays We have Thanksgiving coming, and we have, uh, Christmas season, and as you know, the cold season, the flu season Also brings upon some, eh, added, uh, I guess, reason to be, uh, safe and secure out there, those of you who are in, in mind Implined to, uh, receive flu shots, they're being, uh, given, as you receive your Either your full vaccinations or your booster shots, so, uh, again, those are being provided by our health professionals Again, the message does not change, wash your hands, sanitize, I've got my own sanitizer, a little spray can here, smells very good And, uh, always, uh, always, uh, um, uh, sanitizing our hands Uh, also, wear a mask, I do have my mask here, again, we're at the, uh, Rhodes Summit here at Twin Arrows, and it's a great summit Talking about, uh, using some of these monies that are coming down, millions of dollars, that's Indian country in this new, recent Uh, in, infrastructure bill that, uh, President Biden had signed there, which, as you saw, President Nez was, uh Was present there for that, with honor, with honor, the nation was, uh, represented there, uh, at the White House Uh, avoid large crowds, you know, sometimes you can't avoid those, but you could take Care of yourself by avoiding people staying in close proximity, maintaining your social distancing, masking up, if that, two masks And, uh, you know, only gather at the household as we come to these holiday, uh, situations, uh, usually dinners, right? Usually, uh, um, celebrations and the like, and, uh, of course, you can reduce all, all of these, um, uh, uh, exposures by simply staying home So, it's one of the things that we advocate for here as well, so we appreciate all of you all out there, we're praying for you The nation's leaders are praying for you, uh, President Nez, and First Lady, and, of course, my wife Uh, Second Lady of the Navajo Nation, are just, uh, doing all we can, we're gonna work like it depends on us But we're gonna pray like it depends on you, uh, God, Father God, which it does, and, you know, I think I'll take this time, the President says, we'll end with a prayer, but Since I missed the beginning of it, we'll just kinda, uh, uh, bless the middle portion of this, uh, Town Hall update here And then we'll introduce our Dr. Jim here, as she's standing readily by there, and the Captain Brian Johnson, and Del Yasi of the Epi Team, so Uh, if you would oblige me right now Father God, we thank you, yeah, she, yeah, Dean, God, we thank you for this time, thank you that we, as leaders, can pass out Data and information, Lord, that'll bless the people of the land, we pray for those people of the land, may they be found safe Lord, and those that are enduring hardship, may you aid them, may you heal them, Lord Father, bring Grace and comfort and your mercy, Lord Father, we pray for all the people of our land Lord, it is you that gives us the ability to breathe, you give us the breath, the breath of life in our lungs, Lord Father, may it be Replenishing, may it be healing to our bones and our lungs and our flesh, we thank you for this time, may, again, may the people of the land Take this information, Lord, the new data, the vaccines, and all of that, Lord Father, as they pray, Father Some of our, uh, dear citizens, Lord, out there, shit, and, eh, may, as they pray and look for your peace and grace, Lord, to receive that vaccine, Lord Father May you answer them, Lord Father, and, uh, give them that, that peace and comfort that they should go forward with it, Father Lord, as we come to you this time, it just asks, again, continue to take even for our land, for Indian country, and for The United States and the world, Lord Father, for you wish that none would perish, Lord, and we thank you again, we come alongside You and your present work out here, Lord, you are not surprised by this pandemic, Lord, uh, you know all things So, we acknowledge you and your preeminence, Lord, in this time, and now be with us as leaders of the Navajo Nation, Lord, the largest tribe Here on North America, Lord Father, you set us here, we are still here, our prayers are powerful, Lord, so we thank you again Yeah, she, yeah, Dean, God, may you bless this time now, uh, for the duration, Lord, as our health professionals give And provide their updates, in Jesus's name, okay, she, yeah, Dean, God, amen and amen So, thank you again, Vice President Lizer signing off here, we're at Fire Rock at the Rhodes Summit, what a great time to be alive here And, uh, we thank you again, and continue to pray for you all, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, First Lady, Fefelia And may God bless, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to introduce, uh, Ms., uh, um, our Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health Mrs., um, I'm at a loss right here, I think I hear some casino bells going on, Dr. Jim, I appreciate you Thank you for your leadership during this time, thank you that you, uh, are, are being counted amongst us leaders here Who would've thought we, as leaders, would be going through a pandemic, and yet, here we are, so I appreciate your time, your diligence, your sacrifices that you have done Dr. Jim, take it away
At, non-Vice President, um, for your updates and, um, just the Acknowledgement that we've been all in this pandemic for a very long time, and And like you indicated, I didn't really think, no one thought we would ever be in this situation, so I think to our leaders, not only President Nez, also, um, Vice President, the delegates and Individuals, frontline workers across the Navajo Nation that have been continuing to work Um, diligently and trying to, um, address the pandemic, me, basically, just understanding it and Working with, um, science, and particular to find ways to help, um, reduce, um, hospitalizations and deaths related to COVID, and Um, I'm, want to introduce myself, I'm Dr. Jill Jim, I am the Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health Um, don't, eh, Nish, and eh, look, ah, Nish, oh, that, she, me, that's, she, do, she, that's, she, do, is, oh, Naidash, Nada Ah, do, nah, this, ah, deh, I, he, she, Nasha, do, it's is, Bahaya, yeah, and, eh, be, get, the, she, eh, so Ah, she, it's, oh, um, had, that's, she, di, um Uh, Del, she, Kha, Nasho, yeah, no, had, oh, Nih, and, eh, di, the, cost and scaggy, not a it's, ah, do, hold, any, ah, hold, eh, oh, Yoli, eh, Niki Eh, eh, deko, nonol, kill, um, ah, do, do, yeah, go, Yohan, not, eh, ta, eh, she, bin, not, eh, ah, Kui Jun, on, ah, di, nah, can, da, eh, Nish, oh, Kha, on, beh, and, deit Di, um, ah, di, eh, no, Lini, do, um, LaHodi, across the United States, eh, Yoho, Yago, onil, and then, ke, Koon, he, Nago, deko, hunil So, um, eh, she, bin, not, eh, she, oh, ah, bad, ah, no, sin, Niki, eh, di, eh, Zell, in, don, Nani, eh Kha, di, um, di, um, do, that, uh, um, big, oh, that, oh, that, that, Niti, Zin, eh Um, um, do, do, oh, eh, is, eh, do, la, ta, kha, di, eh, Zell, in, don, Nani, do, kha, di, tosk, eh, da, Niki Bed capacity, the bed, eh, Nili, eh, kha, di, eh, Zell, in, eh, that, eh, eh, um, Kwe, di, 80% that, eh, no, kha, di Um, bond, ah, he, Nell, eh, do, kha, di, um, yeah, go, deh, oh, so, go Do, kha, di, he, eh, he, the, Naha, bad, ah, Yoli, eh, di, LaHodi, do, Nili, do, eh, nah Nas, eh, kha, di, ah, she, eh, she, um, she, ah, Nii, do, um, di, the, cost and scaggy, not, eh, it's, ah, do, he, eh, it, oh, kha, Zell, eh, Niki, that, and, eh Eh, but, oh, do, di, um, Hasi, Nsa, kha, di, ah, start, that's, eh, ah, nah, can, ah, ke, eh, deko, eh, um Do, do, so, that, ah, Yoli, and, eh, the, cost and scaggy, not, eh, it's, ah, do, the, hot, eh Ah, she, um, he, nah, Nish, eh, 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 and, oh, kha, di, and, he, the, Naha, kha, di, hate, either, the, she, Kla, con, then, hint, oh, do Um, oh, stoked, and, eh, neither, in, Texas, the, she, so, that, eh, do, cancer, that, eh, Niki Eh, she, in, the, kha, di, Ben, yeah, Kha, is, eh, in, oh, Niki, and, eh Ah, but, oh, kha, di, the, cost and scaggy, not, eh, it's, ah, do, kha, ah, ah, di, deko, what, eh, do, do, Yohan, eh, do Eh, she, bin, no, kha, di, ah, bad, ah, no, sin, um, ah, she, kha, di, um Baya, deiltio, eh, she, kha, di, um, ah, do, yeah, go, um, nts, Hago, eh, Nek, ha, ha, da, di, Nek, do, di Um, ah, do, he, the, Naha, oh, that, bad, ah, it's, eh, ah, ah, do, she, kha, di, um, he, she, don, he, Zeb, guest, eh, oh, eh, Nini, Zin, oh, do, eh, Yal, do So, ah, she, kha, ah, um, the, neck, eh, that, eh, that, the, 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 like, eh, the, she, Nando I just wanted to thank all the individuals on the call, it was just, um, trying my best to describe, um Our current situation in Navajo, basically describing that, um We've been in this pandemic for quite some time now, and our numbers are not getting better, um, they're not going down, and We have, um, individuals, um, across, not, across the United States and, and the Navajo Nation that are seeking medical care That have been unattended for some time, so we all need to take care of ourselves, if you have diabetes or other, um, uh, cancer or other sort of, um Health conditions, and, uh, we just wanna ensure that, um, we are, um, seeing, uh, patients coming in That are non-COVID-related and COVID-related, so we just wanna make sure that, um, in order to do our part And making sure we don't overwhelm the healthcare system for the healthcare system for COVID-19, I think we can do a pretty good job by understanding that we need to continue to wear our mask indoors and outdoors and also as well as making sure that we are not gathering in large groups during the holidays, finding alternative ways to still celebrate Thanksgiving, Christmas is still out there, but I think we can find a solution, but large gatherings because a lot of us are not vaccinated. We still have a majority of our population, over forty-three percent of our population are still unvaccinated. So we really need to get everyone vaccinated so that we don't see a lot of hospitalizations that, where we will see individuals in the hospital. So I think that's the urgency that I would like to convey today is that we are seeing hospitalizations being impacted in our hospitals across the Navajo Nation. And we are not seeing the numbers going down as much as we would like, but I think we can all do our part and we can use these mitigation strategies that we have known to be effective. Right now, we are continuing to operate businesses at fifty percent maximum of their maximum capacity. We have not reduced that, although we have been in red transmission for quite some time. So we know, we understand the economic impact, the social impact and mental health impact of COVID-19 and schools across the Navajo Nation need to continue to look at, the health advisories to determine their level of response to COVID-19 and their settings. We have been continuing to monitor school transmissions across the Navajo Nation and those areas that are high, please take precaution and Del will go over those areas. And there have been some communities that have been in high transmission probably over a month and now two months, and that's a concern because we need to make sure that we are conveying that to the community members, and this is one way to do that, and informing the public that these areas need some attention in regards to reducing COVID-19 in their communities. So I just want to thank everyone on the call and I'm going to go ahead and introduce Captain Brian Johnson, who is also part of the Health Command Operations Center, who will speak from the Navajo area Indian Health Service perspective. So welcome Captain Johnson, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jim. I just wanted to make sure you could hear me there. I appreciate the information that you shared this morning and taking a moment to speak in Navajos is certainly important to describe the situation that we're currently seeing here on Navajo Nation. Again, good afternoon or good morning, everyone. It's still making our way through the lunchtime hour, but it's Captain Brian Johnson. I serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service in St. Michael's, Arizona. I work beside Ms. Roseland Sewell, who is the Area Director of IHS. And so we've been working diligently throughout this nineteen to twenty months now that we're in this pandemic. It's hard to believe that we've been going this long, but it is true that we were nineteen months, just about the twenty months into this. And of course, we've seen a lot of things, experienced a lot of things over time with the pandemic. We've seen some numbers that have went up extremely high. We've seen those come back down after we saw, you know, the Navajo people take precautions, take prevention measures and really put those into work, whether it was in the local businesses or just with our friends and family members. So many people have done so much to help keep this pandemic in check and we are certainly appreciative of your efforts over that timeframe. With the Indian Health Service, we continue to work with the Navajo Nation and with our ninety-six, six thirty-eight, or ninety-three, six thirty-eight Public Health Partners across the various tribal health organizations. So when I mention those, I'm referring to, you know, Tuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation. I'm referring to Winslow Indian Healthcare Center Incorporated, talking about Safe Memorial and talking about Utah Navajo Health System and the Navajo Nation. So many, so many different partners that we have that have really supported in many different ways. And I just want to give a big shout out to those Indian Health Service and to those tribal health organizations, healthcare workers, the healthcare team that look over and watch over our local healthcare system. If it wasn't for the work that they do, this situation could have been much worse. And we do appreciate and continue to thank and pray for the families who have supported the healthcare workers as well over this last twenty months. So it's certainly been a difficult year and a half or so and we're just grateful for not only the workers, but also the Navajo people who have stood ready and who have adjusted as necessary over time. And it's really, this pandemic has really shown that over time, the, this is how important a comprehensive culturally appropriate public health system is here on the Navajo Nation and making sure that we're looking after all of our friends and family members locally. And of course, as I always mention, we continue through the Indian Health Service and with the tribal health organizations, we continue to monitor COVID-19 case numbers. This is something that's done daily by a team of individuals at various locations and constant phone calls going on in the background, virtual sessions going on, that to make sure that information is being shared appropriately and consistently. And also, we continue to look at those, the test positivity rates and what that looks like. You know, it's important as we move through this pandemic, it's important that we continue to monitor, I always like to use the term from a bird's eye perspective, what does it look like here on the Navajo Nation in terms of COVID-19? Where are the hotspots presently? And how are we, what actions are we taking to prevent those? All these types of questions are things that are being worked on daily by the healthcare team here on the Navajo Nation. Also, as Dr. Jim hinted at as well, we talk about hospital capacity and someone may ask, what do we mean by hospital capacity? Well, if you think of a hospital facility and you think about the number of patient beds that are there, patient beds is a, is part of the hospital capacity as well as the emergency apartment location or space in a facility. What is the capacity with that? We also talk about intensive care unit and what type of capacity we have. And all these things combined, including our staffing capacity, are so important for a pandemic when we start seeing upticks or surges in cases to make sure that we're all communicating and that we're all making sure that we're using our resources and sharing resources across our healthcare system to the best that we can. And of course, we always have those partners who are located outside of the Navajo Nation. So there's a number of hospitals, both, you know, in New Mexico, Arizona, Colorado, Utah and other states that we do. Unfortunately, we have to, in some cases, transfer patients to those locations for a higher level of care. And so these are, these are all, this is all information that we share internally to make sure that we have an eye on how our healthcare system is working locally to support the Navajo people. And again, I just want to, I know that we've said it and said it over and over again, but I just want to point out just how important it is that individuals and families continue to look towards the vaccine as the best tool that we have to fight this pandemic. If we had one tool to fight this vaccine with or to fight this pandemic with would be, it would be vaccines. And we know that we still have several different types of vaccine that have been authorized during this pandemic. And it's so important that we continue to move towards that. And if folks have questions about the safety and efficacy of those vaccines, reach out to your local health facility. Also, feel free to visit the CDC.gov website. Again, that's CDC.gov for a trustworthy source of information on vaccines and just information that's available for the general public as well as healthcare providers. So important to know, to know that as well. So again, just want to make sure that folks understand that whether, if you have not received your, say, your two-dose series of Moderna or Pfizer or a single dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson, now just as good a time as any to visit your local healthcare facility, ask questions, set up an appointment, or maybe stop through a vaccination drive that many of our facilities are having here on Navajo Nation. Some of the facilities have drive-through services where you pull up in your vehicle, they vaccinate you in your vehicle and then you're able to leave at that point in time. And it's a, it's a really great service and we plan to continue providing those here on the Navajo Nation. So in terms of supply of vaccine, we're doing very well. We keep our headquarters updated on where we stand with our vaccine supplies and the needs that we have here and they continue to provide those. So I always like to mention that I know that there's a lot of information that's coming out, that comes from many different directions, maybe on the nightly news channel or maybe on the internet or maybe, maybe an email is, you receive an email or just by word of mouth, somebody mentions something. And it's important to know that whatever we're listening to, it should be science-based and that's what we're doing. We're following the science in terms of these vaccines and how well and how effective they are in fighting the COVID-19 virus. And you know, it's important that we understand that there has, it has been shown that over a period of time, over a period of months, that the amount of protection that the initial doses provide, that it starts, you'll hear the term waning and that means the ability of that initial vaccine dose that you received to protect you from the virus. Well, that's why more recently booster shots, booster vaccines were approved and for all of the authorized vaccine types that are available today. So a single COVID-19 vaccine booster dose is recommended for individuals who receive, who received two doses of the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine at least six months ago. So if you attended a vaccine clinic at, you know, say Gallup Indian Medical Center or Tuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation or other location and you received Pfizer vaccine or Moderna and it's been six months or so ago, then you are now eligible for a booster dose. And the facilities have those booster doses available. And you know, I recommend if you haven't received information, that you reach out to your local healthcare facility and ask how you might be able to get your booster dose if you did receive the first dose series of Moderna and Pfizer. And also for those who have received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine at least two months ago, that boosters are now authorized for people eighteen years and older who received the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine, again, at least two months ago for that particular manufacturer vaccine. So again, with Pfizer and Moderna, if you had your initial series, your initial doses at least six months ago, then you are eligible for the booster shot. And if you received Johnson &amp; Johnson at least two months ago, then you are eligible for a booster shot associated with the Johnson &amp; Johnson virus or vaccine. So you know, while our booster shots offer the opportunity to reinforce vaccine protection, really our primary goal is to make sure and to encourage vaccination of those who have not been vaccinated. I mean, that's where we really need the public's help. We know that there are still a number of individuals who have not received the initial vaccine series and we just, you know, openly encourage individuals who have not yet been vaccinated to please take, take a moment and consider that and look at the information that's available in terms of the safety and just how effective it is. And it has prevented a large number of hospitalizations and death by actually individuals having those vaccines. So please consider that. I'll also mention that, you know, going back in time, we've, we've had many different age groups involved in the various vaccines and the most recent approved age group was the five to eleven-year-old age group. And that was actually on November the second, so just about fourteen days ago, two weeks ago, the Advisory Council on Immunization Practices unanimously recommended the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccination or vaccine for children five to eleven years old. And once that was recommended by the Advisory Council, the Center for Disease Control Prevention Director then accepted the recommendation. And so that moved it forward. So it's important for the public to understand that we're no longer in that twelve-years-old and up range in terms of getting vaccinated, that at this juncture, at this point in the pandemic, we have approvals all the way to the five to eleven-year-old age group. So important to be aware of that and certainly feel free to reach out again to your local health facility if you have questions about that, of when those pediatric vaccines are being provided or if you can set up an appointment. We've been reassured by the Biden administration that ample vaccine supply for our nation's children and basically millions of doses have been distributed nationwide. So states and tribes and the Indian Health Service are working to ensure that doses are distributed efficiently and equitably across various jurisdictions. So that's important to know that the supplies of the vaccine at both pediatric or the adult versions, we still have ample supply, we have adequate supply and we continue to order that and receive that and are not having any issues with that. So don't be concerned about having an adequate amount of vaccine. Locally, we continue to monitor that closely and that's our responsible responsibility to do as healthcare workers. So I also just wanted to make sure that, that folks understand that COVID-19 testing again continues here on the Navajo Nation. And it's important, if you, if you have any concerns that you've been exposed, if you have concerns that you might be infected with COVID-19, you know, being tested is a pretty straightforward process at this point in the pandemic and all of the healthcare facilities are still offering those services and will continue to offer those services over a period of time. So also, we've talked about on a number of occasions is just in terms of the information being received, whenever we receive information that is inaccurate or what we refer to as erroneous information, it has errors in it. We refer to that as misinformation and in the healthcare industry and misinformation can be very dangerous in this situation, basically not using information that is, that's been studied, not using information that's been researched, those kinds of things. Basically, information that's not science-based can certainly be questionable at best and it can be very harmful or even deadly if we're not paying attention to getting information from the right sources. So I just want to encourage folks again, please try to find reputable locations, reputable websites, reputable people. Maybe it's a physician that you know, a provider that you trust locally, that you're aware of, that has taken care of your family and friends for a number of years. Maybe it's the CDC.gov website where you can get information that we know is science-backed and science-based information. I just want to encourage everyone to please be cautious with the information that you receive from others. And if you feel that it's an error, please don't further share that information, but just, you know, ignore the information and move to a source of information that you feel does have validity that is seen as a reputable. that is seen as a reputable, uh, source of information. Also, at this time, again, um, not only is COVID-19 a concern that we need to keep our eyes on in terms of the vaccines and, uh, booster shots, but also it's that time for the flu vaccine, it's that time of year, and the flu vaccine is available, and it is able to be given along with the COVID-19 vaccine. And so, uh, your local healthcare providers can work with you on that for your particular situation as a patient, and, um, they can help you, uh, get that flu vaccine as well, because we also know that, uh, the flu can, on an annual basis, can also be a certainly, uh, dangerous, uh, uh, bug, if you will, that we need to address and try to prevent. So the flu vaccinations are available as well, and just have to ask for that, and they should, uh, be able to take care of you. So, um, with that being said, I think I'll stop there again for today, and I'm gonna turn the time to, uh, Dell Yasi with the Navajo Nation EpiCenter, and, uh, Dell and his team, uh, as I've mentioned before, have done an outstanding job during the course of this, uh, pandemic, and, uh, we just appreciate them for what they do every day. So, uh, Dell, you, you have the floor when you're ready, sir, and thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Doc, uh, Captain Johnson. Appreciate those kind words. Uh, yeah, good, good, everyone. Uh, my name is Dell. I'm with the Navajo Epidemiology Center and also, you know, a co-lead for our COVID, um, EpiTeam. So this is our latest, uh, numbers for Navajo Nation gading, uh, measures, two-week time, uh, analytical time period from October twenty-ninth through November eleventh. But before I move on, I always, I always like to acknowledge our epidemiology team working very hard on, uh, COVID, um, disease surveillance. On Navajo Nation, we are a large epidemiology team, and these are some of the folks here, um, and these are the entities that I'll go over. Of course, our, our own Navajo EpiCenter within the Navajo Department of Health, IHS, uh, Navajo Area IHS, uh, tribal health organizations, they're also known as the Cari8 Facilities, uh, CDC, CDC Foundation, and Hopkins, and Coke, and TGen, who they help us with the COVID strain surveillance out of Flagstaff. And then, of course, our Arizona, our State Health Department from Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. So this is, uh, recent cases and trends. This is a sixty-day time window. You see the bars here, I know there's fluctuations in daily case counts, um, every day. Um, so I like to always try to highlight this little bar here. This is October second. Prior to that, we were seeing about, about forty, on average, forty cases a day by this deadline, which is a nine-day weighted center moving average, all the way up to October, uh, roughly about October second. Then as you can see, this red line, um, begins to go up and has, uh, continued to go up, uh, currently. We are now at about, um, eighty to ninety cases on average a day. So we have gone from forty on average cases a day to about eighty to ninety. Um, so we are still seeing a lot of COVID cases every day currently, and our seven-day infection rate is one point zero five, and we went up, uh, from point nine seven, I believe, last week. So we now, our threshold is at one, so we are above one now. That's it. Let's continue to monitor that. This is our, our situation, um, spatially, um, Navajo Nation and our bordering states. And this is, uh, you see, uh, there's red, red, um, service, uh, areas for Shiprock, Gallup, and Tubus City, which means their incidence rate is four hundred, um, plus cases, four hundred thousand people. And then next is, this is the orange-colored, um, areas for Kianta Kinley, Winslow, and Crown Point. There are the two hundred to three hundred ninety-nine cases, four hundred thousand. And then the lighter shaded color here is, the only one is for Defiance, with zero to two hundred ninety-nine cases, four hundred thousand, and this is over a seven-day time period. Um, and you see the, the numbers for the, our bordering states. Um, so there are still a lot of COVID cases going on, on the nation and around us, um, currently. And so over a seven-day period from November fifth through the eleventh, there were a total of six hundred and thirty-nine new cases, which puts our incidence rate at four hundred and three cases, four hundred thousand, um, population, is the, the latest, um, our COVID situation on Navajo. Some additional metrics here, our seven-day test positivity rate is now at sixteen point four percent. It did go up from fifteen point eight percent last week. So it is continuing to, to creep, creep up, uh, every week. There are about eleven hundred average daily tests being conducted on Navajo over a seven-day period. There's a lot of testing going on across Navajo, so, um, hospital capacity, uh, hospital beds, I know Dr. Jim spoke about this in her, uh, part of the, the presentation, hospital beds, uh, regular beds, increased to seventy-three, um, seventy-three percent, uh, average daily occupancy. It was like sixty-four last week, so seventy-three. And then this is a little bit concerning. I see you beds at now ninety-eight percent. Uh, across Navajo, our, our threshold for this is eighty percent, so we are way above that, and we'll, uh, continue to monitor this, uh, going forward this week. We're, we're still at one for contact tracers to daily case ratio. This is the latest, uh, vaccination numbers for Navajo Nation residents only, uh, as total population at fifty-seven percent fully vaccinated. And eligible, uh, residents, you know, for now, uh, for ages twelve years of age and older, I know there's now, we're, uh, five years and older is now, there also, that age group is now also eligible, but we are still compiling those numbers, so this is, we're still for twelve years of age and older at seventy percent. I know President has mentioned that. Um, so there's one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five Navajos who have been fully vaccinated. This is the epicureus for, uh, the entire pandemic for the US and Navajo Nation. The US in blue, we are seeing a little bit of an uptick in COVID cases across the country. And then Navajo, uh, the orange line here, we are still seeing, uh, a lot of, or uptick in cases, as I mentioned, about eighty to ninety cases, um, this scale over here is for Navajo Nation, so it's about eighty to ninety cases on average, uh, a seven-day average, uh, which is very high. Seven-day incidence bar chart comparing Navajo Nation to the, to the fifty states plus a couple jurisdictions, so we have moved up from six positions. Yeah, we've been trending the wrong way for, for about a couple months now. Then you see the bordering states here in red, Colorado, and next one, Utah. The Delta strain surveillance here, or the COVID strain surveillance, the latest report as of November ninth, last Tuesday, the only change here is the COVID, um, variant here from six fifty-six in Report twenty-seven to six seventy-one in Report twenty-eight. So there's fifteen new cases identified with the Delta. And over across the US, really, this orange bar is all Delta. Ninety-nine point nine percent of all variants across the US is Delta currently. And then seventy case rate, uh, within our region, uh, Colorado, and New Mexico, and then with us, Navajo Nation, we're on this dark shade of, really high number of COVID cases. As well as Utah and in Arizona, they're still seeing a lot of cases too. Uh, community transmission, there's a lot of red here, uh, across the US, meaning high COVID transmission, including within our region, all the counties within Navajo Nation are red with, uh, for high COVID transmission. These are high-risk, um, chapters over time. Uh, this is in the green, the greens section here are the new fifty-five chapters that we, that's, that's. And then over time, as you go across here, the, the, at least six weeks ago, and now, these twenty-seven chapters have been on this list, uh, every week for at least, uh, six weeks. So, um, this, this list has gone up from, I think about twelve or so chapters to now twenty-seven, so. Recommendation, risk level assessment, cases remain high and we're still in the red threshold, uh, test positivity remains high, and public health capacity, we still have this one contact tracer to daily piece ratio, our threshold for this is five, so we are below, way below that, so we're trying to hire, um, additional contact tracers currently. And then I mentioned hospital capacity has increased, uh, across the, the nation, so that's a little bit, uh, concerning. And last, we remain in the red, uh, for all of our indicators, cases, testing, public health capacity and hospital capacity, and so, um, red level for our, uh, gating matrix, uh, and also COVID response level for Navajo Nation. So, and I underst, I'm gonna stop here, and I understand I am the last presenter, so...